Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting, April 4th of the Brevard County Commission. Do I have Pastor Bowana Bostic? Come on up ma'am, if you would. And state your name and the church you're with. We would certainly appreciate knowing where you're from and then the floor is yours ma'am.
Yes, good evening. I'm Pastor Bowana Bostic. I'm the Senior Pastor of City or Refuge Christian Center in Cocoa. And let's pray. Heavenly Father God, we're so grateful for your presence today. Thank you for this meeting. I pray for every Commissioner. I pray for their families for safety. I pray for divine guidance, wisdom, and understanding as they go forth, moving Brevard County in the way you will have it to go. And God, as we are here tonight, as we unify as a county, God, we just thank you for each family that's represented. We pray for our schools continually for protection. And we just thank you for what you're doing in our nation, even though our natural eyes don't see good at times. But God, we know that you're yet in control. And we thank you for unifying our nation as well. In I X these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Need to order? Mr. Goodson?
Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, can I have a motion to approve the January 24th, February 2nd, March 2? Minutes? Motion by Commissioner Tabaya? Second by Commissioner Goodson. All in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0. We're missing Commissioner Zonka today. And I just had to mention that. We are going to go into our resolutions. And do I have the Sheriff's Department here? Sheriff Ivy, if you guys want to come forward, and the Communication Center staff, and the supervisors? And Junie? This is always one of the safest days in the county commission when all of you guys show up, yeah. Sheriff Ivy, I'm gonna read this and then the floor will be yours, sir. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners has determined that public safety telecommunications are integral part of emergency response and process nationwide. Whereas the Brevard County Sheriff's Office, Brevard County Fire Rescue, Cocoa Beach Police Department, Cocoa Beach Police, Cocoa Police Department, Indian Atlantic Police Department, Indian Harbor Beach Police Department, Melbourne Police Department, Palm Bay Police Department, Brockledge Police Department, Satellite Beach Police Department, and Titusville Police Department. Did I miss any? Okay. Are designated as public safety answering points under the Florida Enhanced 911 Plan of Brevard County. And these agencies employ over 200 individuals as public safety telecommunicators. Whereas the National Emergency Number Association and the Association of Public Safety Communication Officials recognizes the week of April 14th through the 20th as National Public Safety Telecommunication Week to acknowledge individuals employed by public safety telecommunications field. And whereas the Board of Brevard County Commissioners desires to recognize the dedication and professionalism of the public safety telecommunicators in Brevard County. Commissioners, can I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Felton? Second by Commissioner Goodson. All in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0. Sheriff?
Thank you ma'am. And thank you, Commission, for recognizing these brave individuals that are truly the lifeline for our citizens, for our first responders. Most of them are not with us today because they are actually working and handling calls and things of that nature that they do each and every day. I will tell you that they are the ones that are responsible for saving lives. When someone calls 911, they're talking to the telecommunicators from any of our agencies. And often talking with them from multiple agencies at the same time. And they deal with, they deal with things that most, most people couldn't deal with, the crisis, the critical incidents that take place. They deal with it each and every day. And then you put that on steroids, that stress that goes on them when something like a Kevin Stanton incident happens where they're, they're not only trying to get people there to help a fallen first responder, but they're trying to do everything they can themselves and not being able to be there to see what's happening, but knowing that they're needed and knowing that their, their loved one, the one that they're responsible for is out there and has been hurt. So when, when we pass this resolution, and I know we do it every year, I just hope our citizens realize that our telecommunicators across the board are the lifeline of not only our agency, but our brothers and sisters and partner agencies across the board. And they're the lifeline for our citizens. So I could not be more proud of them, the work they do each and every day. They come to work with smiles on their faces and passion in their heart for helping others. And I don't think you could ask for anything more from them. So on behalf of our entire team, we thank you. We thank you for recognizing them, their hard work, and their efforts to save lives.
Just like the sheriff said, he always says it so well. Just being quick, the stress that these folks are under is amazing. And I thank you for recognizing them this week. Taking that first call on someone's worst day is no small feat. And it's important that we recognize that and appreciate that in our community and the safety that it brings. And looking after all our operational people out on the field and keeping them safe as well is a large task. And we appreciate you supporting them and honoring them. Thank you.
You wanna do a photograph? Absolutely. Alright, you guys, let's crowd in there. Cheryl, you guys are all up front. Rita, was that your grandfather that hand, oh, that's Frank, I'm sorry.
Ms. Jessica? You're doing the Eagle Scout, right? Ms. Jessica, thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to do this for your organization. Thank you for caring about children and doing all that you do with us. I personally appreciate it very much. I'm gonna read this. And then if you guys want to address this, that would be wonderful. Whereas Florida's bright future depends on the healthy environment of its children. Whereas adverse childhood experiences, including abuse and neglect of children, can cause severe and costly consequences for children, families, and society as a whole. And every child has a right to a safe, healthy, and happy childhood where they are educationally and developmentally on track. Research shows that parents and caregivers who have support systems and know how to seek help in times of trouble are more resilient and better able to provide safe environments and nurturing experiences for their children. Whereas the month of April, Prevent Child Abuse Florida, in collaboration with the Governor's Office of Adoption and Child Protection, the Florida Department of Children and Families, Nounce a Prevention Fund of Florida, and the Child Abuse Prevention Task Force of Brevard implements Pin Wheels for Prevention. This is a statewide coordinated campaign aimed to increase the awareness of child abuse prevention efforts by encouraging healthy child development, positive parenting practices, and community support. Whereas the blue and silver pinwheel displays in this campaign symbolizes the health and happiness that children do deserve. Commission, I would like to ask someone to make a nomination to accept this resolution. Make an April 2023rd as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Felton? Second by Commissioner Goodson. All in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0. Ma'am?
Thank you. My name is Jessica Miles. I'm the Child Abuse Prevention Task Force of Brevard Chair. I also work for Brevard Cares, which we provide services to families in need. Child Abuse Prevention Month is near and dear to our hearts because this is why we do the work that we do. You mentioned the pinwheel, the blue represents the bruises that children suffer as due to abuse. So we work tirelessly here in Brevard County. The task force is made up of all the child abuse prevention agencies here. And so we're working tirelessly to ensure that our children in Brevard grow up safe, happy and healthy like this pinwheel and what it represents. So if you do see this around, just remember our children that we've lost and our children that we're gonna save in the future because of the work being done here. So we're thankful for your partnership and we thank you again. So we wanted to make sure you had a pinwheel and also a lapel pin of the pinwheel, just a reminder. Thank you. Yeah, it's a lapel pin as well. Okay, no.
Can we have Grant and Rod Newcomb? Congratulations today. I'm going to read the resolution and then you can say some words after. Whereas Grant Newcomb, a member of Riverside District Troop 330, chartered with Advent Lutheran Church in Melbourne Beach for the past seven years, joined scouting as a Cub Scout in August 2011 and earned the Arrow of Light with PAC 391 in Melbourne Beach before transitioning to the Boy Scouts in 2016. And whereas in pursuit of his Eagle Scout designation, Grant has earned 26 marriage badges, one Eagle Palm, and has served his troop in several leadership capacities, including Senior Patrol Leader. And whereas Grant has demonstrated commitment to Boy Scout values in his community by participating in scouting for food drives, assisting others with their Eagle Service projects, and logging over 300 hours of community service since entering high school. And whereas Grant's Eagle Scout Service Project consisted of designing, seeking material donations, and supervising the construction of a "take a book, leave a book" cabinet for the Eastminster Presbyterian Church and local community. And whereas, after the successful completion of his Eagle Scout Service Project and Board of Review, Grant achieved the rank of Eagle Scout in January 2023 and will be graduating in May from Westshore Junior/Senior High School and plans to pursue a degree in chemical engineering. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby unanimously recognize and commend Grant J. Newcomb for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and offers congratulations and best wishes for a successful future. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 4th day of April 2023. And with that, madam, I will make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve? Second by Commissioner Goodson. All in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0.
Thank you very much. I don't really have anything to say. I think you summed it up pretty well.
Oh, you can thank Commissioner Zonka for putting that together for you.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
She's not, she's not here right now, but I, I do wanna make the, the let me spit this out again. It's hard to be an Eagle Scout. So it's very impressive that you did all that work and you accomplished this. And most of our presidents were Eagle Scouts. So we're expecting great things out of you.
I'll try to deliver.
Okay, Commissioners, before we go into the resolutions, a couple of housekeeping items, we need to elect a vice chair. So I'm gonna turn this over and see if you guys want to, someone make a nom, not, what's the word I'm looking for? Nominate someone?
I nominate Commissioner Goodson.
Okay, have a nomination.
You kinda beat me to that, Felton.
You gotta be quick, sir.
Motion in a second? Commissioner Goodson, or?
What am I supposed to be humble and say yes?
No, I'm trying to make sure that you're not gonna yell "heck no" like Commissioner Tabaya would, so.
No. I will serve you. I will not take a bullet for you, but I will serve.
That's okay, I'm bulletproof from what I hear. Have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye? Aye?
Thank you.
Opposed? Passes 4-0. Thank you, sir. And we also, if you guys wouldn't mind, we need to make a motion. I, I think the recommendation after I talked to staff and looked through what we did in the past is, is to go ahead and keep the District 5 staff intact right now. And then we'll have the governor figure out, you know, if he's appointing or what we need to do in the future. So I think if I could get a motion to go ahead and just leave the District 5 staff intact and they would report to us, Ms. Danielle and, and the other.
Now, question?
Yes, sir.
Three or two?
I don't know. You guys let me know. I think they're a fairly busy district. I, hopefully it won't be very long before we have somebody. Maybe we need to do a discussion later, but I don't know what else to do at this point, so. Commissioner Felton? Look at you pushing your button.
I still don't have the right one. I, I think we anticipate a quicker appointment. The last time there was a pending election, so I think I understand why that vacancy was left open. The governor was gonna let the voters decide that one. But with 20 months remaining on the term, I think the, obviously session's going on right now, so I don't expect them to do anything fast, but I think we could revisit this issue in say 60 days. If the governor hasn't made an appointment, then we could adjust the, the staff level. But in anticipation of a new, new Commissioner coming in the next 60 days, that, that we could leave the staff in place.
Okay, Commissioner Tabaya?
I was in support of doing this indefinitely. I will let you know that Ms. Danielle has already jumped on the zoning stuff and sent our offices all a thorough report of the impact of the district that she's currently in charge of. She did a very good job at that. And so I'm extremely comfortable with leaving those folks in place. Hopefully, you know, it comes long before that 60 days, but should it go longer, I'm, I'm, given the performance that we have already, I'm very comfortable with what we have in place right now.
Okay, so Commissioners, I need a motion or?
I have a question. I have a question first. Are the three, I don't know, nobody's answered the question of three or two? Three. Are all three full-time? Why did you then, or not you, but why did the Board decide in District 2 to only have two? Was there a reason there?
Commissioner Tabaya?
Did you mention two?
Yeah.
Yeah. Why was the, why did the Board decide for District 2 to have two? They had three, but when the other Commissioner went away, they had two.
I think he had a part-time one at the time. And I think Fritz told us at the time they could have done just two
Not two?
And fine. Is that correct? That conversation?
Madam Chair, it certainly was not my understanding that we were limiting anyone's employment. That certainly was not the intent of a vote. And if that was the, if that was the result, I greatly apologize. It looks like Frank.
I believe I recall correctly, but actually I think it came upon the recommendation of the staff member who was in charge at that point, which was Fritz, who said he felt comfortable that District 2 could handle it with two. And then we assisted the third employee find another position in the county.
Well, it seems like years ago. So can I have a motion from the Commission, please?
I'll make the motion that the staff stays on.
Okay, I have a motion?
I'll second. Okay.
Second by Commissioner Tabaya. All in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0. We are moving into consent agenda. Commissioners, I do not have any cards for these. Do we have any that you would like polled or voted no to? Commissioner Tabaya?
F3, Madam Chair.
F3 polled, sir?
Yes.
Okay, any other Commissioners? Right, can I have a motion to pass the agenda item minus F3? Motion by Commissioner Tabaya, second by Commissioner Goodson. All in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0. Item F3. Commissioner Tabaya, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I needed to poll this for all the work and effort staff had gone through. And I know there's been many staff members on this, but I'd like to mention Director Mary Ellen Donner for their, her and her entire staff for the hard work on this. This is gonna result in some ARPA funding for some lights, bleachers, and shade playground. Also has shade removal, some baseball fields and new turf, as well as expanding on a parking lot. Additionally, I wanna thank the Acting Temporary Interim Superintendent, Dr. Sue Han, for all her work at the Brevard County Public School. Though Dr. Han and I and this Board may disagree on other parts, she was, she put that aside and worked for the betterment of her and our community. So I certainly wanna thank her for that. I also wanted to mention that the Brevard County School Board unanimously approved this inter-local agreement on 3/28 recently. School Board Member Jennifer Jenkins was more than willing to vote affirmatively for the $3 million ARPA funds for these improvements. However, at the same meeting, she commented on a similar, though much less dollar figure of $30,000. And she said, quote, "It makes me feel uncomfortable about the ethics behind it." Hypocrisy is the scarlet letter of politics, and unfortunately, it's that type of behavior that shines a bad light on all of us. So with that being said, I'm sorry I have to end that way. I just should not watch school board meetings, but they're so much more entertaining than our meetings, and I encourage everyone to watch. But thank you, staff, for doing such a good job on this. I think there's gonna be some... A great outcome, and there's a bunch of kids that are really going to appreciate and parents all the hard work that's gonna go into this.
Commissioner Felton?
So make a motion to approve F3, Madam Chair.
Okay, a motion. Can I have a second for discussion?
I was gonna ask a question before we got there. Had a question earlier from a constituent about the proper use of ARPA funds, so if Frank Morris could just address that, there's no issue of spending ARPA dollars on this?
Absolutely not. There's a variety of aspects and categories in which ARPA funds can be utilized. They were thoroughly reviewed by staff, the county attorney's office, as well as the county manager's office and the budget office, and this expenditure is within those guidelines.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes four zero. We are moving into public comments. I have Mr. David Penley. If you would state your name and address, sir.
My name is David Penley, 1536 Norman Street Northeast in Palm Bay. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I want to discuss some very serious deficiencies in the Animal Control Division that we have here in Brevard County. They're so bad that eventually, if they're not changed, someone's gonna get seriously injured, or they're gonna be killed. And I'm not exaggerating when I say that. I'm not trying to blow this out of proportion. Let me tell you... I'll try to tell you as quickly as I can what happened. On December 23rd, my wife was walking her son's little dog on the side of the house, and our neighbor's dog got out, attacked my wife and the dog. Only by a miracle did she make it back in the house. The dog got bit, but she didn't get bit. So immediately, we called Animal Control. They said, give it a few days, someone will be there. We gave it three weeks. We called a minimum of eight times to the Sheriff's Department, and nobody even returned a phone call. So after some very serious run-ins with the neighbor, in desperation, I drove up here to the Animal Control Department to speak to someone about animal control, and the lady there said, there's no one I can speak to about animal control. So I went, left, and went to the Sheriff Ivy's office, wanted to speak to Sheriff Ivy. Had to be put on list, and they told me they would call me back. And then I called Joe Hillbrand, I believe, too, who runs the... Actually runs it, requested a call back from him. No one called back. So literally, three weeks from the day that I called, finally on... That was on January 12th. Is when I... By the time I got back to the house, an Animal Control officer was there and took my complaint. A few days later, he gave them three citations. Now, what's happened between from January 23rd to the present is that since this time, the dogs have gotten out, they've killed six of our neighbor's chickens and bit two more people. And they still have the dogs. That's what's amazing here. If I were to jump over my fence and kill my neighbor's chickens, I'd either be arrested or shot. If I attacked my neighbor, I would be arrested or shot. But no one... Palm Bay Police, when you call them, they say they can't do anything. Takes three weeks for the sheriff to get out there. So the dogs have more rights than people do. These statutes are written to protect the dogs rather than potential victims. So what I'm asking here today is that you put a bug in Sheriff Ivy's ear, or Hillbrand's ear or something, and get these statutes changed so these dangerous dogs can be taken off of the street. Someone's gonna get seriously hurt and/or killed unless they do. The statutes are not... Even after the dogs are declared dangerous, the people still get to keep these animals, and they're gonna get out again. So...
We... I was in a briefing yesterday, and Ms. Stern from District Five did brief me on this, and she said that they had contacted the Sheriff's Office and that I think he's working on it. So I... This isn't for this. I'm just letting you know that that's the information I got yesterday. So people are aware of this, just so you know.
Right. Well, Sheriff, or Officer Han was at the house today to take another...
I just wanted to tell you that.
Okay.
So... But I think somebody's gonna get back to you shortly because there was... It was a conversation yesterday, so just so you know, people have listened. Okay?
So what about the laws, though, that allow you...
You'll have to just wait for the sheriff to get ahold of you because this is that, but he does know, and I know that was the conversation that I heard yesterday.
Right.
All right, I have Janie Sharma. You're gonna have to help me with your name. I hope I did okay.
Yes, so it's Angenie Sharma, 2942 Baldwin Circle, Rockledge, Florida. Thank you for letting me and the public speak today. Each day in our nation, there are an average of 3,703 suicide attempts by young people grades nine to 12. Depressed is now classified as the leading disability in ages 15 to 44. I come to you as a young concerned person regarding an issue that is affecting everyone that is bipartisan and deserves immediate action: mental health. I'm the founder of Minds Without Borders, a nonprofit initiative dedicated to break down mental health barriers in Brevard County and across the globe by providing access to resources and support for all. We believe mental health is a universal human right and that everyone should have the opportunity to achieve optimal mental wellness. Last year, the Florida Department of Education passed a legislator to teach students six to 12 regarding mental health wellness. Twice a month, public school teachers are expected to teach students about mental wellness. My initiative was sprouted by this because, as a high school student, I believe that we deserve more. With all that is put on us, we deserve more. I come to you, Commissioners, because I believe that you can make real change to an issue that affects everyone in this room. This issue has affected me, my friends, and millions of youth across the world and the U.S. In the Space Coast alone, the Space Coast Health Foundation found that 27% of youth believe that their overall mental health is poor. Although I'm in the piloting stage, I'm proud of the work we have done, but we need your support to continue our mission. The demand for mental health services has increased dramatically, and we need more resources to meet the needs of our community right here in Brevard County. I want to start this initiative at a grassroots level by starting with Brevard County with the help of you Commissioners. I come to you to ask for help and secure funding, but also by asking for your support and raising awareness about the importance of mental health, especially in the youth like me. This is a political issue. Legislators and community members or leaders have the power to affect one's health. You have the power to support and fund this initiative. In our nation's politics, people discuss such polarized issues like gun violence, but let's talk about the underlying issue that is affecting everyone, affecting everyone in this room, affecting Brevard County youth, also affecting me personally: mental health. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I look forward to promoting mental health wellness in Brevard County through empowering our youth and breaking the barriers, which I'm doing through my nonprofit Minds Without Borders. Thank you.
Ms. Sharma, could I ask you what college you're from?
I'm currently a junior at Westshore Junior/Senior High, so yes.
Junior/Senior High?
Yeah.
Very impressive.
Thank you.
Good work, and thank you for caring about that. I'm very impressed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner, just...
Mr. Justin Harvey?
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
You just state your name for me and your...
My name is Justin Harvey. I live at 103 South Osceola, Orlando, 32801. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today, I'd like to bring to your attention a potential fraud on an enormous scale happening in your county. There's now clear evidence of NASA using numerous methods to grossly mislead the public about astronauts being on the International Space Station. During interior ISS scenes from NASA's own live feed, the use of wires, harnesses, green screens, and virtual reality have been detected to achieve the appearance of a weightless environment. Examples of this include astronauts fading in and out of the screen, green screen glitches, grabbing objects that aren't really there, pulling on invisible wires, getting tangled in their harnesses, and even astronauts appearing out of thin air. This begs the obvious question: if they're really up there, why are they using Hollywood techniques to fake the footage? Now unfortunately, I can't show you these clips in here today, but I will be sending them to you. Moving on, during outside... Outside the International Space Station, during spacewalks, air bubbles have been recorded on numerous occasions. How is it possible for air bubbles to be present in the vacuum of space? I once questioned astronaut Scott Kelly about this phenomenon. His body language and answers only created more questions. In 2013, astronaut Luca Parmitano nearly drowned during a spacewalk when his helmet filled with water. This happened again just last year: air bubbles, helmets filling with water, and drowning. Are they in space, or are they underwater? Now, what's really interesting is that they train for spacewalks in an underwater pool with a complete ISS replica. Now surely, they aren't filming these spacewalks in an underwater pool and then editing them to appear if they're in space? Because that sure would be something, wouldn't it? I'm calling on the Brevard County Commissioners to open a full investigation into NASA's fraudulent practices and use of taxpayer dollars. It costs NASA $3 billion per year to operate the ISS, and if they don't have a darn good explanation as to why they're faking these videos, I and the public would like a darn good explanation as to where our tax money is going. And if they are indeed faking the funk, it is our duty to expose and eliminate this fraudulent and astronomically wasteful ISS program. And look, I know what you're all thinking. NASA's part of the federal government, and you're just county commissioners. Even if what I'm saying is true, what can you do? But let me remind you, not only is this happening in your county, as public officials, you have the platform and the ability to make a statement or hold a press conference, alerting the public, state, and federal authorities to investigate further. You have the power to start the conversation. Video evidence of everything I described today will be emailed to you all, and I truly hope we can get to the bottom of this. I look forward to the day that $3 billion annual budget is put towards our veterans, our homeless, maybe some of that mental health stuff the young lady just spoke about, and the revitalization of Brevard County. Thank you for your time today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Robert Burns?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Robert Burns, Viera, not space or underwater. Apologize for my attire. I wasn't planning on being here, but I tried to get here to catch the sheriff because this applies to him as well. But I was in the middle of drafting an email. For some reason, people think that I'm attorney or hold some kind of office, and I don't do either. But I often get sent a lot of information that if I don't have the answer to, I try to pass it on to you guys or those that may have the answer. And this is in regards to the new permitless carry bill that was passed and signed, I believe, yesterday. Or yeah, yesterday. I've gotten a lot of questions about it that I don't necessarily have the answers to, and I was hoping to catch the sheriff as well. But I'm just gonna read my rough draft email to make sure I don't miss anything with some important questions that I think should be addressed. With a new law that passed allowing citizens to carry concealed without a permit, the number of those exercising their right to carry will likely increase significantly. As a result, there will be many of those carrying who may not be adequately trained in firearms safety laws, et cetera. That's one of the downfalls I saw of the bill, that it removes that requirement to at least have some basic training on education of gun laws and gun safety. I think it's important that our local law enforcement conduct information campaigns informing citizens of how to safely exercise their rights, reinforcing where they can and can't carry, and maybe most importantly, how they should interact with law enforcement when they are carrying. In order to ensure the safety of the officers and the citizens, it should be very clear of what is required as well as what to not do when encountering law enforcement while armed. For example, when approached by law enforcement, don't just pull out your weapon to show them that you are armed, which could be interpreted as a threat. A citizen may honestly think it's best to show the officer the weapon, thinking they are informing them, but it could be interpreted as a threat at the same time. What is the expectation? That needs to be clear. We don't want someone ending up getting shot just because they were confused, misinformed, or frankly, just stupid. We also want officers getting home safely as well. Other questions from the public come along the lines of, can a business prohibit me from carrying my concealed weapon? For example, can Publix post a sign on their door saying, "No concealed weapons allowed"? Is that enforceable? Is it a crime to not comply with that, et cetera? I think we'll see many businesses that take that approach and may cause confusion and confrontation. The public should be informed of what they can and can't do in privately owned businesses. I could certainly see these policies being challenged by someone saying their rights are being infringed upon by this private business not allowing them to carry their gun. Also, from the business owner's point of view, what are their options? Can they establish these policies? How do these policies have to be advertised? Do we need a county or city ordinance for these types of things? Should law enforcement or municipalities establish a consistent sticker or banner to place on a door, et cetera? I'm kind of out of time, but that's kind of the concerns that were being brought to me that I think we should get to before the law goes into effect.
Those are really good questions.
Thanks.
Lot to think about. Thank you, sir. Okay, public comment cards are finished, so I'm gonna close public comment. We're gonna move to item H1.
Good evening, Commissioners. H1 is a petition of vacate at public utility and drainage easement at 1710 Misty Way. It's in District One, vacating part of a 10-foot wide public utility and drainage easement. There's no issues.
Commissioners, this is in my district, and it's a pretty good project at this point. A motion by Commissioner Tabia?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Felton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes four zero. Item I-1?
Good evening, Commissioners. Item I-1 is coming back from the Tourist Development Council. It is seeking direction regarding TDC's recommendation to use cultural carryforward funds to pay for the Tourism Plus Indian River Lagoon Grant Program for fiscal year 2023-24.
Thank you, sir. I am on this board, Commissioner, so when we start at the meeting, the discussion, the Mr. Cranis and his staff made us aware that there was a million dollars left over from prior years. And so at that point, the board had some conversations, but it seemed like pretty much of a no-brainer at that point to move that over instead of changing the money around from the lagoon. This could go directly to help compensate that fund right there because this is not encumbered or allocated at this time. So Commissioner Felton, I did took your idea, too, because I thought it was a good one. But when we hit this, it kind of just took care of itself, so I just wanted to give you guys a preview of what happened in the meeting. Commissioner Goodson?
Yes. What I did hand this to the clerk, and what I've handed out is requests that are in Tallahassee right now, Senate and House. And you can go through this and look, we'll never get everything, but if you notice, it's about $124 million. So if you've got a quarter of that from your legislators, that'd be $25 million going into the Indian River Lagoon. Now, that doesn't count the federal. That doesn't count, if you count the dredging at $4 million for Sykes Creek, O'Gally Northeast Construction, $4.5 million for the dredging of the intercoastal waterways. All of that being said, I personally would like to make a motion that we follow the TDC's original recommendations and make a motion to suspend Tourism Lagoon grant funding for 2024 until we see what we get from the state and the federal government. That's mine.
Commissioner Felton?
We have a few different items here today for TDC, so how would that affect each one? You're on the motion.
Okay, help me, sir. You're talking about the three different bullet points that were turned into...
I'm talking, we have a few things on the agenda today, so...
You wouldn't be pulling the money from cultural lights. You would just let it slide this year because right now, if I'm not mistaken, and Virginia can answer this, with everything she's got going, if I'm not mistaken, still there's $100 million in the funds for the lagoon. So why are we in such a rush to take a million dollars from the tourist development or cultural?
Madam Chair, I see where you're going, and I think we could just vote no on this, and that would leave the money in the... Right, Peter, if we vote no today on this one?
Yes, sir, that'd be correct.
Okay, Commissioner Tabia?
Sorry, old lady. I apologize.
Okay. So I think Commissioner Goodson, if you would restate a motion?
To follow the original recommendations of TDC and make a motion to suspend Tourism Lagoon grant funding for '23-'24 fiscal year and revisit it in '24-'25.
So you're wanting to not move the lagoon fund over to the beach fund?
It would remain there, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Madam Chair, yes.
If no, if this action is denied...
If no, if this action is denied, then the funds would remain in the cultural fund, and any funds that are in the beach fund would remain in the beach fund and not be used for IRL grants.
Okay, so will this have gone ahead and still moved the lagoon fund where we put the moratorium on it in the beach because that was the TDC's request?
Correct, ma'am. Yeah, the only funds, well, right now, the TDC's recommendation is also that no beach funds would be used for anything other than beach renourishment projects.
Okay. So we'll go back to the last meeting with the TDC's recommendation of putting a moratorium on the lagoon funds and having it go to the beach funds. That's what Commissioner Goodson's trying to make a motion on?
Right.
Okay. And Commissioner Felton?
I think if we just don't adopt this one, we could go on to the next issue, and so...
Okay, so... I'm getting confused. I'm sorry. I normally don't get confused doing this. Commissioner Tabia, you got an idea to help with here or give your lights on?
Yes, Madam Chair. I asked staff in the county attorney's office about this issue to write a motion that would put into effect what the recommendation of the TDC. So I just tried to take their recommendation and put it into a motion with the help of not only staff but the county attorney's office. And what I got there was stop, a motion to, the motion would be to stop diverting further funds from beach fund for purposes other than beach renourishment and contractual obligations for beach cleaning in Lori Wilson Park. So that...
They didn't bring out Lori Wilson Park?
No.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm with you. That, we have contractual obligations with that. That's why it had to be put in the motion. That's why it should have probably been put in that motion. I didn't want to include it in here because I didn't vote for that in the first place, but we have a contractual obligation, and that's the only reason it was added to this. So that's what their suggestion was in all this stuff. If you want to go in a different direction, you're certainly more than welcome to, but if you take at face value what the TDC voted for, that was one of the two motions that I got out of that. And I'm not trying to pull a fast one here.
No, you're not.
I just wanted to take the motion that we had there.
I've got the same data.
There's a second set as to whether or not this would require, you know, the other part of that, which would be the cultural stuff, whether or not if we're to change the allocation of that, whether or not that would require an ordinance change. So there's a couple balls in the air here. So, you know, confusion certainly is understandable with when we're dealing with motions that, by the TDC, that would require us potentially to make an ordinance change to effectuate them. So I'm still trying to wrap my head around that one in all honesty.
Okay, so let me see if I can paraphrase what Mr. Goodson's trying to do here. So what his motion is, if I'm correct on this, and make sure I'm saying this correctly, is that the last meeting, the proposals we did, they're going to be, we're not going to do, we are, okay, here we go, that the Indian River Lagoon fund will stay intact, the beach fund will stay intact, and the cultural fund will stay intact.
Correct.
Okay. So that's the motion.
Good.
Do we have a second?
Can I ask you?
Yes, sir.
A quick question. As you pointed out in that meeting, I watched a little bit of it, there is unused balance for cultural grant stuff of a million, roughly a million dollars. What does the motion do with the unused million-dollar portion of the cultural grants?
My motion is that you'd leave it alone. You'd let them have it. Let them...
So they would include that?
Huh? No, wouldn't they?
So your motion would wrap that up? That's...
The motion would not allow, my motion would not allow you to mess with the Cultural Alliance money, even if there's a million dollars left over. I don't think it's me, I think it's 800,000.
No, it's a million.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, they gather 800,000 a year, so at the end of this year, they'll have 1.8 million. So, okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
On Tobias?
No, yours, sir.
No, 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 yours was the one that had priority.
Your motion was first.
Okay.
Okay, I do not have a second, so that one's dying for lack of second. Commissioner Felton?
No? So we're back on I1?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Is there a motion for that?
Commissioner Tabia, is this where you're wanting to make this motion?
No, I don't. I was just trying to, I was just trying to forward the motion made by, the recommendation made by the TDC on the second part. I didn't know we were jumping into the cultural aspect of things because there's two things that you discussed.
Yes, yes, sir.
Just ask a procedural question. So we can vote not to do this today, or it doesn't get a second and it does move on? What happens?
I'm going to look down at Mr. Richardson, just in case I don't say this correctly, but I believe if there's no action taken, then nothing changes. The cultural fund stays intact. There's no direction for IRL grants, which comes up in a later item under J3, so we can discuss it at that time, but no action as far as this item would leave things intact as they are.
That's correct.
Let me throw out a thought here. They were trying to, at the TDC level, try to get the extra million in the beach funds because there's the matching funds that come along, so the TDC really wanted to get a million dollars into the beach renourishment funds. So as of right now, we just, we stopped all of that. So they're still at the lower amount where the TDC had wanted to move that higher amount over. So we sent it back as commission last time. They had recommended putting a moratorium on the lagoon and moving it into beach, and we didn't do that. We took it back to the TDC for discussion, and these are the three things that they discussed, and the main conversation was they want us to be aware of how important the beach fund is. And probably for about 35 minutes of the discussion. And when Mr. Cranis had brought up, there's, guys, well, there's a million dollars sitting around not doing anything. It just made sense to move it. So again, I would be in favor of taking that million dollars that's sitting in a reserve fund that will not be used and moving it over, and everything is made whole at this point. But I need a motion right now if we're going to just let this go away or if we're going to do anything. So what's y'all's thoughts?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
So here's the issue I'm seeing with this, and I don't disagree with you, but again, I also ask staff on this one to give me a motion that would, and here's what I got back, and here's the issue that I'm hearing, now looking at the motion, would be to direct staff to prepare an ordinance amending the tourist development tax budget plan to allow money built up in the cultural funds to be used to fund the tourism and Indian River grant program, the 2023-2024 budget year. So this is that, that's the motion. Unfortunately, it's my understanding that that would require an ordinance change.
Oh, really?
Or what I've been, yes, and here's the issue with an ordinance change. Since there's only four of us, there would, we'd need, all four of us would need to be behind that. Otherwise, there'd be no point in asking staff to put together an ordinance if we don't have. Now, I would vote for this, but I don't know where the three of you guys are on this, and if one of you guys were against that, I respect that, but I wouldn't want staff to prepare that, you know, prepare that ordinance.
The TDT legal council gave them a way that it would work without this. They said what they would do is to take the cultural funds and apply them to the beach. Can they do that?
I'm going to, I got this from Morris...
Gotcha.
...30 minutes ago. I'll punt it over, I'll punt it over to him if that's okay.
Okay.
All right, so the cultural funds fall under the first two pennies, and the way that the first two pennies can be spent or allocated by percentages, you know, you have up to 10% of cultural, and it's an up to. So you could zero that out if you want. You can take the accumulation. In the, there is a beach line item within the first two pennies, and that's a 30%, but it's a flat 30%. It's not an up to, it's not a minimum, it's 30% period, and my understanding is that that lever is at 30%. Correct me if I'm wrong, Peter. So I think, I think we may have to amend that part of the code to allow the beach fund to exceed 30% if we're going to roll over the cultural funds into the beach.
Yes, sir, I think that's correct, yes.
Okay, the group there, the consensus was that they felt like the beach needed to be moved up on priority as far as having funds for beach renourishment and the erosion situation. That was a strong conversation with the group there. So if you guys, well, I think this is getting ready to just fizz out right now unless we have four people that have the desire to do that, but that was the recommendation of the TDC. Commissioner Felton, is that new?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't disagree that the beach renourishment fund needs to be built back up. That's, that's a hard one to argue against. The issue is the carryforward funds that are left in the cultural. So my preference would be leave that alone because I want to say the same thing I said before, and this is just my opinion. Tourism industry is good today. There's nothing to say that it's going to be that good tomorrow. And so we could leave TDC a little flexibility by leaving that money in there. And we could revisit this in a year if there's still money left in the cultural fund, right? Could we do that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just an observation, a while ago, we were voting on the cultural funds, and I didn't catch this, Commissioner Tabia did. He had brought to the board that they had a specific amount when they found out they had excess amount, and the thing, all of a sudden, they were given, every person that asked, double amount of money without requesting that. And that gave me great heartburn with it. It did, I went back and looked at it. So I, I just, I talked to the TDC board about making sure we have great oversight on these funds. We worked it very well last time when we had them go back with the boat races as far as what they turned in. But I'm not so sure that there isn't an excess amount in that fund, that it would be better used somewhere else, maybe advertising or something as far as getting more heads in beds. But that's an ongoing conversation for this board because if we make those changes from on hearing from our county attorney, it's going to require four out of five, which is all four of us right now. But it's definitely something to look at. I encourage each of yous to start watching the meetings. I've learned a lot over the last two years on the TDC board, and so I think it's, would be really good for us to know these things. I had no idea until I got on the board, all the stuff that we did. So commission, is this just dying right now for lack of second?
Who made the motion?
Were you making a motion? We have no motion right now, so if nothing goes forward, it's all just gone.
I'm okay if it dies for a second, yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure I was the one that made the motion, because if you made the motion, I was going to second it. It seemed like you were the one that got the idea I made the motion.
Yeah, it was, is this time that we should do all of this right now, or you guys want to wait till we get to the other items of TDC? Let's go ahead, well, let's go ahead and do this now because we're on the subject. I did some research on some items with TDC funds, and I made a top sheet here, but all the other ones has all the data collected from revenues is as far as everything that's collected from the years and all the expenses we have. And I did an equity assessment through the districts. And Commissioner Tabia, District 3 isn't getting any of the TDC funds. So I wanted to make you aware of that as far as what we're doing. And I know certain areas right now are more in the highlight of it, but I think if we do better advertising the county, Melbourne Beach, I think is, I think that's your beach, Commissioner Tabia, I think it would do well with a little bit more of these dollars. So I went through all of the money that we have coming in and money coming out, and what was interesting, and Commissioner Tabia, you brought this up a while ago about parks that are eligible for this, and a lot of them are beach parks, and I divided these up by the districts here. And there is an extra $6 million that's also sitting in the capital funds that I thought might be good because Commissioner Goodson brought this up a while ago, and Commissioner Zonka at the time mentioned that there could be some of these dollars that could be moved. So just something for you guys to think about, there's a possibility that we could take some of these excess, divide it over the whole county, and you can pick the parks that you know needs help with these tourism dollars. I know up in District 1, we're in great need of another ball field because we host tournaments there every weekend, and we're unable to hold the capacity, and that's a lot of families coming in. So I wanted to throw out this idea for us to think through because I do think we've got a bit of an equity issue with this, and I think it would be good to get it out and start promoting some of these items. Commissioner Felton, you have a lot of the U-triple S.A., and there's a lot of tourism coming in. And I've brought this up at the meetings often, that I don't think you guys are getting enough of the love as far as advertising of the things going on in Viera, and I think that is a discredit to what we're trying to do. I think District 5 probably needs a little bit more of these funds as well. And Commissioner Tabia, again, I don't think you're getting any of them. But Commissioner Goodson, I went through this, I did think I found just some funds here to do the parks if you want to digest this a little bit and think through it. So this is an idea I wanted to throw out for you guys to think through. It completely starts rearranging some of the stuff, but this only takes the majority. It's not changing any of the way that we spend the dollars because these are all tourist beaches. And Commissioner Tabia, I have to tell you, you did most of this work a while ago. I just called and got the work product sent back out again. I should have listened a little stronger back then, but again, it took me a while to get educated on all these things, so thank you, sir. Commissioner Felton, is that a new light?
It is.
Yes, sir.
Can the TDC or TDT be spread like that across all the parks in the county, or will only some parks qualify?
These are all the qualified parks I got from Mary Ellen.
Okay.
I'm a little bit at a disadvantage, ma'am, since I don't have what was passed out, but that's okay. Thank you.
I can shed some light on this.
Sure, thank you, sir.
This was a report that Parks and Rec put together a while ago. It's been modified, updated, and the parks here are ones that, because they bring in tournaments or they're beach-related where they believe they put heads in beds. So these are the parks that Parks and Rec came up with in the various districts that we believe would be eligible for TDT funds. So they're not all the parks in the county, but this was on the last, and I'm speaking what's on the last page of what Commissioner Pritchett had handed out.
Page C.
Those are the parks that would be in.
Page C.
See?
Yeah.
Yes.
Lettered them, yeah.
I hope that helps.
Yes, these are the ones that are tourism county parks, and so this is an ability to help these parks greatly because I know a lot of them need some upgrades, and they do serve quite a tourism dollar, too. Commissioner Goodson, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Commissioner Tabia?
Yeah, and just to be clear, I appreciate the credit. This was actually Commissioner Barfield's idea, and this is what started with Lori Wilson. This is how the TDT was able to fund Lori Wilson Park. My argument was, back then, well, I didn't want to, I didn't want to treat the parks differently, so I asked not only the county attorney at the time, but Parks and Rec to give us a list of other parks that met that, those statutory guidelines, and how much we spend to see if we could do the same thing. So, you know, I, if we go forward, great. I just want to let you know that we currently are doing this or have done this to the tune of millions of dollars with the upgrades to Lori Wilson Park. This would not be a unique idea. It's one that we've spent seven figures over the last few years.
You're right, and I have that data, and I should have put it in there as well. I apologize for that, but it's over millions, over a million. So, yeah. Do I have any more comments from anyone? So you guys want to bring this back next meeting, have a good discussion on it, maybe make a vote, or... Where's Christine when I need her?
Yep.
Sorry, sir, go ahead.
I don't have a problem discussing it further at a future meeting.
I don't have a problem discussing it further at a future meeting.
Okay, so next meeting, I'll, I'll put this back on the agenda, and we can have a, a discussion, and we'll maybe make some moves then if, if, if we're up to it. But I, you guys, well, John, Commissioner Tabia knows this, I'm very strong on the equity issue of things getting moved through the county. Everybody's paying taxes. Everybody should be getting some of the return on their investments into the government. So, all right, we are going to move to item J one.
Madam Chair, item J one, it's notification of the annual sewer and water maintenance index adjustment. Just to recap, in 2021, the board approved the implementation of the annual sewer water rate increase utilizing the consumer price index of the sewer and water maintenance index without a specific cap. As part of that same motion, it was made that if the rate rises above three point four percent per year, it should be brought before the board for notice and discussion. As the index this year is at four point fi, four, four point four one, without alternative direction from the board, we may move forward.
Thank you. Commission, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Tabia?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept staff's report regarding the annual CPI sewer and water maintenance index rate adjustment. I also move to direct staff that they do not need to report the index adjustment to the board of the county commissioners unless the proposed rate adjustment will exceed the CPI sewer and water maintenance index for that year. That's the motion, Madam Chair.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes four zero. Item J two.
Good evening again. So item J two has two parts to it. One is approving the cultural support grant program, funding guidelines, application and score sheet. And then the second part is providing staff direction for whether the board would like to have a major event grant program for next fiscal year.
Okay, Commissioners' comments? Comment, motion? Item J two?
Madam Chair, I don't vote for these, but I have no problem setting up a rubric, no matter how rudimentary it is and how poorly it was constructed. And this would meet both those guidelines. So I will make a motion, though, to approve the guidelines. And I'll also vote for the, the rubric set up, the poor rubric set up for the major grants if, if, if needed. But again, I have not and will not ever vote for them, no matter what their arbitrary score collected by the TDC is.
Yes, sir, I do know that. So that's a motion to approve J two, correct, sir?
And, yes, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Felton. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes four zero. And Ms. Andrea Young spent a long time with that. She did a great job. Item J three?
So, yes, ma'am. So item J three is now the Tourism and Lagoon Grant Program Funding Guidelines Application and Committee Score Sheet. And just a note, based on the conversation earlier, if this is approved, then these funds would in fact come from the beach fund.
Okay, Commissioners? Commissioner Tabia, is that a new light?
Madam Chair, I can't make a motion on this one, given the statement that was made by the director, because I would not be in favor of diverting those funds as previously stated.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion one way or the other?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay, this is the one we didn't approve last time, correct?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Mr. Cr, um, this is the one that the commission sent back to him last time and wouldn't do it, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Felton made a, a motion to approve it?
No, did not.
I did.
I'm sorry. Mr. Goodson?
I did.
Okay, I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second? Mr. Goodson, that's your second one tonight.
I know it, I'm hitting a-
Okay, Commissioner Tabia did that his whole first year, didn't he, Commissioner Tabia?
I remember this.
Okay, dice for lack of a second. I, I, what do you guys have any ideas then what to do? Or are we just going to... We've got to give them direction.
Do, do we need to, do we need to do something else here, Peter? We didn't get a second. So the money stays in the beach re-nourishment?
That's correct, sir. It would just stay as is.
All right, thanks.
Are we still doing the moratorium on the lagoon, then?
Well, without this approval for J three, then there would be no Tourism and Lagoon grants for next year, ma'am.
Okay, so this puts the moratorium in place.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, if we do that, I kind of like what Commissioner Felton threw in for his motion with that last time.
I meant that as a compromise, but my preference would be that the money stay in the beach fund. To the earlier point, we should build up those funds again.
Okay.
And then we could revisit this. I'd, I'd be happy to revisit this each year. But I think right now, I think the prudent thing to do is to, is to build up the, the beach reserves.
Right. Does this keep that amount in the beach reserves that the TDC was asking for?
Yes, ma'am. There'd be no action taken. So those, those funds in the beach fund would just remain as is.
And they can move the lagoon over then and use it in the beach matching?
Yeah, technically, it all goes into the same fund. So we just wouldn't have a, an Indian River Lagoon Grant Program this next coming year.
Okay. Please.
Yes, if I'm, if I may, under the third penny, sixty-five percent of the revenue from that is, goes into the beach fund. It's allocated by priority, with the top priority going to beach nourishment. As a second priority, you have the grant, Indian River Lagoon Grant Fund Program, but that only becomes funded, it, it may only be funded if all of the obligations of the beach nourishment program are met. So there, there aren't two separate pots. The Indian River Lagoon sort of follows as a second priority if money is available in the beach nourishment fund from the third penny.
Okay, thank you. So we just kind of backed up what we did the last time, and we're just moving forward with the first recommendation of TDC then, correct? So, because they can just do it at their will. All right. I wonder why we bought that recommendation then? Yeah, but you know what's so funny? Letting it die did the same thing.
Yeah, I know, that tickles, man.
It's confusing me, so.
One out of, one out of two.
Okay, we are moving into board reports. Or did I forget something? No. We just got the fellows that came up, so it got my attention. All right, Commissioner Robate.
No, thank you.
Okay.
You can vote now, Frank.
I, I do have a, a board report. I'd like, with the board's permission, to invite Fire Chief Voltaire up to update, give the board an update on our Ocean Lifeguard Program and its status. As you know, since last year's hurricane impacted beaches fairly significantly, and riptide issues have been a, a, a challenge. Fire Rescue is in the middle of addressing a variety of issues, and I'd like him to give a brief update to the board about that.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commission. I would like to start off by recognizing our Brevard County Ocean Rescue professionals. Since November of 2022 to the present, they have conducted over three hundred and ninety-two rescues and have made over three thousand contacts with citizens and visitors. Staff has identified a trend on Brevard's beaches. This led the leadership to approve the extension of our seasonal lifeguards. Ocean Rescue continued to be proactive and began seasonal coverage earlier than programmed. Since December of 2022, there has been ten significant ocean incidents, seven of those being on south beaches. This led to Indian Atlantic and Melbourne Beach requesting one full-time tower each to include cost data. Fire Rescue is developing a report with the purpose of defining the core of lifeguard services across the county. In this report, consideration of lifeguard tower location would be data-driven, based on beach usage, population, access, parking areas. We anticipate having this report complete in forty-five days. Program impacts to be evaluated and contributing factors are the increased number of rip currents, the population increase across the county in the last two years, and resurgence of tourism post-COVID. Recruiting challenges of the post-COVID workforce has been no different for Ocean Rescue. Our seasonal program consists of primarily high school and college students. Trialouts are currently being conducted every weekend for seasonal positions to capture every potential candidate. This past Sunday netted five, moving to the hiring process, and this is our highest pass rate since we began in November. Ocean Rescue has also created a swim clinic to assist in getting candidates times down to a passing rate. Once the test is passed, we provide all necessary training to the new lifeguards. We have also integrated our fire rescue recruiter into this process to help our onboarding efforts. In the response to the increase in, increase in ocean incidents, the county manager approved the extension of the seasonal lifeguards, which focused on our roving patrols. Ocean Rescue started the seasonal program earlier than defined in the agreements, increased education of rip current dangers through social media, beach signage, and face-to-face by the roving lifeguards. We also partnered with emergency management to provide signage along the main highways leading into our most populated beaches. Full-time towers were supported the week of Brevard County's spring break due to college and high school being out, the staff was available. That week itself resulted in twenty-eight rescues and zero major incidents while on duty. Lifeguards would stay late after hours, respond via mobile units, as population, daylight, and rip current risks warranted such measures. Lifeguards are also using daily signage to identify the rip currents along the beach, and they will take them down day-to-day, evaluating the rip current status on the beaches that they cover. Thank you, and standing by for any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Guys, are these old lights?
That's all, ma'am.
Thank you. Just a, a, a thought on that, I think we need to probably work on getting more lifeguards. And so another thing with this, guys, if we consider this, and we, TDT dollars around, and we're able to do this, I would fully be in favor of doing lifeguards out of the general fund at that time. I do believe we need to renegotiate with the cities. These costs have gone up, and I think we need to work on raising the city input for some of these beaches as well. But again, this is another opportunity with these funds coming in. If you have people dying on beaches, it's not real good for tourism. So I, I think this would be a, just, this part, we really need to look this over, guys, and make some changes. It's, it's not what it was in the eighties. Things have definitely changed, and we are a growing community. We're growing with tourism population. The type of tourism is growing, and we really need to relook at this and how we're using these funds to get, as Commissioner Felton says, heads in beds and making it stay attractive. A lot of these places need a lot of extra attention because they're getting flat-out ugly. And so we need to, as a board, look at these things, send the recommendations back to the TDC board and have them vet them. But I just want to mention that because I think this is a good ability to find funds as well as we're doing this and be able to afford the lifeguards. So if you guys would really look over this thing, because I, I sent a lot of information on there. And why, okay, we'll get back to the part later. But thank you, sir, for all that work.
I have a technical question.
Oh, you got a new light? Yes, sir, please.
Just, just a technical question on this, maybe for Morris or Frank, because I think Peter left. I know he's in the back. Can we use TDT to, to fund lifeguards?
There, statutorily, we wouldn't be able to use that, but there are a variety of categories of TDC funds that can be used in different places in the organization. And so depending on where some of those dollars are spent, we may have the opportunity to think out of the box and pull general fund monies where, you know, for example, the commissioner was speaking earlier of capital projects. So if we were going to allocate some funds to various parks projects, that may provide some opportunity for us to use general fund dollars, which can be at the board's direction, shifted over to lifeguards. But we wouldn't do it directly with the TDT dollars. That, there's certain requirements that can be done statutorily, but it's only for very limited counties, under very limited circumstances with certain populations, and we would not fall into that group.
Okay, I thought you were going to talk about seaweed.
Yes, I could talk about sargassum weed, yes. Thank you. The sta, we do have staff, you know, we're, we are concerned. Last year, there was especially, it wasn't too bad in Brevard, but other areas in Florida, sargassum weed became a problem. It is anticipated to be a, a growing problem this year. We're not sure exactly when it will be coming. I wanted to let you know that staff is working, natural resources, solid waste. We're meeting to take steps, for example, making sure that we're in a position that if cleanup is necessary of beaches because of the amount of sargassum weed coming onto the beaches, we have a program set up. We've already met to do that. We're talking with Keep Brevard Beautiful, and we are actually starting a monitoring program for, for turtle nesting to make sure that we take all the necessary steps that if we have to start a program of removing the sargassum weed from the beach and, and bringing it over to solid waste, that we're able to do that when the need arises. And that will require us to start a monitoring program about sixty-five days in advance, which is now. So Virginia Natural Resources, they're, they're working hard. Tom is doing it. And we're speaking to, you know, Parks and Rec too, and making sure that all the players are in place to take that action if and when it becomes necessary.
Thank you, sir. County Attorney?
No report, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Goodson?
No, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as I'm sure everyone's aware, the state legislature is currently meeting. So now is the time where we're able to watch what goes on in Tallahassee and its impact here in Brevard County. Many times, we think it is negative, and other times maybe positive. Certain times, I think we can learn from steps that they're taking. So I want to throw something out here. On March sixth, Representative Esposito filed HB five, which would eliminate Enterprise Florida. The Speaker of the House, Renner, stated, quote, "Enterprise Florida has over-promised and under-delivered for years and drains funds from higher priorities. Enterprise Florida is a public-private partnership with objectives of increasing economic diversity, attracting businesses to the state, and assisting existing businesses in their development." Fourteen point four million dollars from state and direct operating expenses plus grants and other funds. Enterprise Florida states on their own website, "Florida is one of the best places for business with pro-business climate and competitive costs. Florida highly skilled workforce is ready, willing, and able to help your business grow. Few states can match the scale and scope of Florida's key industries and assets." And from world-class airports to seaports and roadways, Florida provides unmatched connectivity. Enterprise Florida covers the entire state and provides site recommendations to businesses. And I got to think, this sounds a little bit like corporate welfare they're trying to do away with, and it sounds like an organization that we may fund here. So let me tell you the similarities to the Space Coast EDC. The Space Coast EDC lists the following reasons for business to locate Brevard: tech-ready workforce, transportation leader, favorable tax size- workforce, transportation leader, favorable tax size, educational excellence, business-friendly government, unmatched quality of life, powerhouse, and pioneers, referring to existing organizations in the county. A March 13 Florida Today article shows that Brevard County is one of the top corporate relocation markets. And that was based on an analysis by Boyd &amp; Company. Boyd &amp; Company is a leading international recognized consulting company in corporate site selection. They have 50 years of counseling for corporate decision-making and policymakers. Their clients have included Boeing, Pepsi, Visa, Hewlett-Packard, JP Morgan, Chase, EPS, Royal Caribbean, Del TD Canada Trust. And what they looked at when looking at Brevard County: attractive lifestyle, favorable operating cost structures, strong travel and hospitality support services, positive demographics and business attraction trends, attractive housing markets for top executives, costs of labor, electric land acquisition, construction property taxes, sales tax, and corporate travel. The reason I'm pointing this out, they did not mention, they did not mention, one single time, they did not mention any of the services that the EDC specifically provides. And we pay for this. One, in our last budget, it was $1.4 million. The EDC has received, let me say this, $25,427,700 since 2006 alone. In a 2021 financial audit, the EDC salaries alone totaled $841,108. So if the state decides to eliminate Enterprise Florida, maybe we should consider looking at doing the same with the EDC. Just throwing that out there, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. True to form always. Commissioner Felton?
I have no Board Report.
No Board Report. One more thing that I would like to throw out from my little sheet I handed out, guys, down here as well, that I talked to the county attorney. We had a voter approved on the ballot for workforce housing in this commission before the new Commissioners worked real hard on trying to figure out a way to do this with workforce and affordable housing. We did make a change a while ago to be able to perhaps use some of the TDT funds. If you have all these hotels and these places that are taking tourism, but they can't afford to live in that area. So that's another thing if you guys would think about as you're looking through this, of ways to maybe help do that. The county attorney said that if we did it directly with TDT funds, we'd have to be in partnership. There is a possibility, perhaps, of doing some of the infrastructure that does belong to the county to help enforce people wanting to bring some type of workforce housing into the area, which we're desperately in need of because we almost have no inventory left at all. So that's just another thing I want to mention to you guys to look through. That I spent a lot of time on this, so if you would really dig in, I'd really appreciate it a lot so we'd have a good conversation. And on that, there's no more lights, and I'll call this meeting adjourned. Y'all have a great evening.